We'll call the meeting to order. This is meeting of May 2nd. We'll note that all four commissioners are present. First item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
I'll move we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, the motion carries. Then the next item is a consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing none. Would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson. Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to the non-timetable agenda. That's tab four in your book. And the first item we have there is the administration of oath for appointment of city commissioner, and that is Mr. Frenzel. And we'd ask that our city administrator administer the oath.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joe Frenzel, do solemnly swear.
I, Joe Frenzel, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of city commissioner.
The duties of the office of city commissioner.
In the city of Dickinson, Stark County, North Dakota.
In the city of Dickinson, Stark County, North Dakota.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
I hereby further solemnly swear.
I hereby further solemnly swear.
That I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
That I am not under any direct or indirect obligation.
To appoint or hire any person.
To appoint or hire any person.
To any position with the city of Dickinson, North Dakota.
To any position with the city of Dickinson, North Dakota.
Congratulations and welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel, for doing that. And, Mr. Frenzel, thank you for agreeing to serve once again.
My pleasure.
We'll move to item B, which is an appointment to standing committees here for commissioners. And, Mr. Kessel, you have a couple of suggested changes.
Thank you, President Johnson. I do have a recommendation regarding appointments for Mr. Frenzel. The first would be to recommend appointment to the public library board, the regional airport authority. Those are two positions that former Commissioner Landblum held. And the other would be to replace Commissioner Steiner on the Stark County Planning and Zoning Commission. If you recall, Commissioner Steiner, although willing at the time, preferred not to be on the planning and zoning commission. And I don't want to overstep my bounds, Commissioner Steiner, but I believe that would be the case. And Mr. Frenzel has experience on that board as well.
Mr. Steiner, are you agreeable to that?
I am agreeable. I didn't disagree before. It was just that the mayor told me I had to be on it.
It's good to do what the mayor tells you to do.
Joe is very familiar with it, and he'd do an excellent job.
And, Mr. Frenzel, are you willing to serve on those three committees?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Well, then, Mr. Colley and I always forget. Can I just do this, or do we need a motion?
You would need a motion to make those appointments.
You need the motion. Okay. Would there be a motion, then, to accept Mr. Kessel's recommendations regarding these appointments?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Okay. That brings us to item C. And this is a consideration to approve a funding request for landscaping. This was made by DSU and the Alumni Foundation. It's regarding a statue that would commemorate a speech by Theodore Roosevelt given on the grounds of where the Stark County courthouse now sits. And I think, Mrs. Johnson, we asked you to do a little research here, funding-wise. Are you presenting that? I think we asked you to kind of give us a re-- give us an updated forecast on the hospitality tax and likely expenditures.
We did reforecast the hospitality tax at a 20 percent increase over 2010's actual. And by doing that, even with the two additions that the commission has already approved, which would be the museum grant match of $9,000 and the airport-- excuse me, the airport hangar grant of $100,000, making these-- if you approve these grants, you would still be at a cash balance of about $600,000, which is where we actually had forecasted the cash to end previously. But it won't actually take anything away from our cash balance.
So, in other words, the money is there if we agree to do the DSU landscaping request and also Parks and Recreation made a lighting request for the baseball field and--
Correct. With the way hospitality tax is growing, we definitely have the money.
Okay. Thank you. And projections are in your commission book. Any discussion, any comments regarding this request?
The last meeting, I think we were unsure about other players, whether they had committed. Do we know that?
The other player is principally the county.
County.
Yeah. Mr. Kessel, maybe you can answer that.
Their funding, President Johnson and Commissioner Jackson, their funding was also contingent upon support from the city commission. So if we move forward, I believe they'll move forward as well.
You know, the approximate cost of landscaping, $76,000. If you're in favor of doing this, my recommendation would be that we authorize up to $40,000. And that's provided that the county matched the same amount. Then, since it's an approximate amount, that should do it, I would think, if you want to do this.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
I think both of these commitments that are being requested tonight, I think they are going to return tax dollars to the community. Babe, the Parks and Rec lighting, I mean, that is something that they need for this tournament. We heard the numbers on what that tournament's going to bring in. There's no doubt that we're going to get a good return on that. The DSC landscaping request, I think the overall project they have, I think it's a great project. And we're going to see tourists down to see that. There's no doubt in my mind. So I'd be in favor of both of these commitments.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Frenzel.
I move the approval of the request.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item D is the item that Mr. Steiner referred to. We also had a request at the previous meeting from Dickinson Parks and Rec, and that was for some monies to be put towards lighting the baseball field. They'll be hosting a regional tournament here in 2011 and 2012, and I believe their request was for $50,000. Is that correct, Mr. Kessel?
That's correct.
Okay. So, chair, entertain comments. Motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jackson.
As I said at the last meeting, I think we need to do this. This is a good project for the city, and people who are supporting baseball are doing a good job, parkers are doing a good job. We should support this. I'd like to second-guess how we do that, though, how the dollars get to the project. If you look at occupancy tax numbers, it appears that conservatively, occupancy tax numbers will exceed what the CVB budget was in 2010. I know we looked at this a year or two ago, but I think we need to look at it again. And specifically, this request for the baseball lighting, I think, should come from the hospitality tax share that the CVB has. Now, from a cash flow standpoint, from a timing standpoint, I'm not sure if that's an issue or not. I understand that those dollars go to the CVB monthly. But that's my feeling. It just-- and I suspect that if the CVB board looked at this and really analyzed where it's going to go, they could see the logic in this, too. Conservatively, they're going to be at $400,000, and that's not even considering three new motels.
I would agree with you. At the last meeting, I had asked Mr. Kramer to approach the CVB to see if there would be some additional funding available from them to help do a cost share on this. And when we look at the numbers that you're talking about, their budget is on target this year to triple from where it was in 2006. And that is a major leap and bound. And I did have a phone call from Mr. Kramer prior to this meeting, and he did approach the CVB. Because it was capital improvement to the park, meaning lighting and restaurants, et cetera, they didn't feel that their funding was appropriate or could be used for that. I would agree with you that there should be some way, because the impact of the tournament and the number of hotel rooms that are going to be used and the impact that it'll have on our community definitely flows right back to the CVB. There should be a way that they should have some skin in the game with the improvements. And the improvements aren't just for this one tournament. It's going to help us in garnering future tournaments as well. So, you know, like Carson said, it's a great investment in our future and the impact that it's going to have. It's a little discouraging, from my standpoint, that the CVB isn't going to do a little bit more with it.
Mr. Kessel.
President Johnson, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. When this project did get approved by the CVB, there was an approach on behalf of the park board to the CVB to fund this program. They have to make a bid in order to get that. And they compete with several other cities that also make bids to get the tournament because it is so lucrative and the impacts to the community are so great. The bid that they came up with and made, the winning bid, was $30,000. And I believe that's $30,000 per year, so $60,000 total. And $25,000 of that was coming from the CVB and $5,000 from the baseball club. So the CVB does have $50,000 in total committed to this project over the next two years, this year and next. I wasn't sure if everybody was aware of that, that piece of information.
I think you're correct, Mr. Kessel. I was just this past week reading through their CVB annual report, and they do mention $50,000 going towards Parks and Rec for this baseball tournament.
And I understand that, too. My comments are born as much out of an analysis of the revenue going to CVB as the lighting issue itself. I don't know if the CVB has a good perspective on what the projected revenue will be for them this year. They probably do, I don't know. But it seems to me that we should make sure they do and suggest that they take another look at that before we go back and look at the ordinance again.
The occupancy tax, whether or not 100 percent was going to the CVB, I don't believe state law would allow us to use it for a capital improvement. And I think that's-- you have different uses for the hospitality tax and the occupancy tax. Occupancy tax would be used for promotion, and the hospitality tax is used not only for promotion but for capital expenditures, and you can use it for operating expenditures for those things that are related to visitation and tourism. So, really, the lighting, our choices for doing the lighting, we could pay for it out of our general fund. We could pay for it out of the hospitality tax. You could also pay for it out of the 30 percent of the 1 percent, because I think this would qualify as a social and cultural thing, too. We paid for lighting at the Mustang Ball Diamonds out of the 30 percent in prior years. You know, I see that essentially as your choices right now. Or, you know, you could choose not to fund them. My recommendation, if you're going-- if you agree to fund this project, which, in my view, we should, I would fund it out of the hospitality tax because this clearly relates to visitation.
Again, I agree with that. Do we think we're too far into the year to sit down with CVB and suggest that it should come out of the hospitality tax that they are receiving?
Yeah, and it could. I mean, because they're going to receive 10 percent of this projected amount, which if Mrs. Johnson's numbers are correct, they'll receive nearly $77,000, so.
And the occupancy tax will probably be $70,000 to $100,000 higher than last year.
Last year, we collected $332,000 through the first three months. We're running something like 120 percent ahead of last year. I don't think we'll continue to run 120 percent ahead, but, you know, we could run 30%, 40% ahead very easily. Because there's two things that drive the occupancy tax. One would be, you know, the number of rooms that are actually sold, and the second is at what rate they're sold. And I think, at least last year, room rates were on the rise. I'm assuming they probably continued to rise during this year. Plus, I don't think there are too many rooms that go unsold each evening now, so they've got high occupancy rates and probably pretty high average daily rates, too. So I wouldn't be surprised if we don't run 40%, 50% ahead of last year.
And again, the point is that, you know, budget revenue for CVB should not be an issue in 2011.
Yeah, but the way our ordinances are, we grant them 100 percent of the occupancy tax less a small fee. We grant them 10 percent of the hospitality tax. And after that, it's really up to their board how they spend it.
I understand.
You know, and so, I mean, that's a separate issue. If you want to revisit, you know, our present ordinances, you know, I see that as a separate issue from the issue here regarding the request for funds to help with the lighting.
I'll move that we approve the $50,000-- is it $50,000? $50,000 from the hospitality tax.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion?
By way of discussion, I'd ask that we start some dialogue again with CVB about the future of the hospitality tax, specifically the ordinance.
I think, Mr. Kessel, you're ad hoc member of their board. You might advise them of the discussion that was held here.
We have a meeting this week. I'll bring it to the table.
Other discussion on this related to this motion? Hearing none, then, will vote on the motion. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Move to item E. That's the north side annexation. What's the resolution number on this one? Again, Mr. Colley.
Resolution 26.
26. And we had a discussion regarding this item at the previous meeting. We asked you to do some research on it. Can you kind of introduce the item again and let us know what your research found?
Certainly, Mr. President, Commissioners. Resolution before you is a resolution finding that less than one-fourth of the property owners in the annexation area on the north end of town have filed written protests to the annexation. At your last meeting, issue arose as to the manner in which the city was calculating the land area of owners that had protested annexation. When we went through all the protests, the total acreage of land area protesting the annexation, we calculated to be just over 53 acres, or about 16 percent, a little over 16 percent of the total annexed area. The objecting landowners had come forward with some information indicating that the land acreage was much higher. They were looking at something close to 80 acres. So we wanted to go back and research that and make sure that we were calculating land areas correctly. There are principally three areas where our calculations are differing from the objecting landowners. The biggest one is a landowner that filed an objection after the 30-day window in which to file objections. The state statute provides that written objections have to be filed within 30 days of the first publication of the resolution of annexation. That resolution was published on March 15th, so the deadline ended on April 14th. This landowner had objected or filed his objection, I believe, on the 18th of April, so it was outside that 30-day window. And for that reason, we did not include that landowner in the protesting area. The second manner in which our numbers differ has to do with a protest that was filed by a business within the annexed area. There was a business that filed protest, signed by the general manager of that business, was not signed by the landowner and did not make reference to the landowner. Under the annexation statute, it requires that all protest annexation have to be filed by the owner of the property and that tenants or businesses or others that are operating on that land are not included as parties that are able to protest against an annexation. And then the other area in which our numbers differ is that the objecting landowners have included a public right-of-way within the land area that they claim is objecting to the protests. They've made the claim that we ought to be calculating the land area of the protests from that owner's lot to the middle of the street, the middle of the public right-of-way. And when we calculated our land areas, we went strictly off of the plat maps that were filed that have specific acreages that are surveyed, identified on those plat maps or the jurisdictional boundaries, the dimensions of that lot included in the plat map. So the question was for us of whether or not we were calculating this land area correctly by just using the lot and block acreage. And there is a North Dakota Centricode statute that addresses the issue. It's Centricode 40-50.1-05, and it provides that when we're dealing with platted land, the public right-of-way that is dedicated in the plat becomes property of the city, becomes property of the jurisdiction. So anything that was dedicated to the public in the plat is not owned by the landowner anymore. That is public right-of-way. It's owned by the city for the benefit of the public. So we do believe, under that statute, we are calculating the land area correctly by just identifying the lot and block numbers and those acreages. That amounts to about a 10-acre difference if you count the right-of-way included in land areas objecting or a few excluded. It's a difference of about 10 acres. I did have the opportunity to talk to a couple of other city attorneys around the state who have been involved in annexations and put this question to them of what's the right way to calculate land area. And all the city attorneys that I spoke to agreed with our interpretation of it that public right-of-way is not included within objecting landowners' objection. So they owned the lot and block number, and that's what they are assigned for the annexation. The other matter that I would bring to your attention, too, is we went through the actual protest letters that were filed by landowners. And in-- none of the objections that were filed referenced public right-of-way or adjoining right-of-way. Almost all of them simply referenced the lot and block that they owned. There was one objection we got that identified a lot and block and specific acreages, 1.13 acres of what they objected to. That is the dimensions of the lot as it is platted. So we counted that as 1.13 acres. The objecting landowners, as they calculated their acreage, gave that lot 1.515 acres. There are a couple of other examples of landowners who reference specific dimensions of their lot. They were objecting to a lot that was 150 by 267 or something like that, and that is the acreage that is platted and doesn't reference the right-of-way adjoining. So, you know, in those cases, we gave the owners the objection for the amount of land that they identified and did not add a right-of-way to it. All of this comes together in stating that if you take the numbers that the city has developed here, 53.10 acres as the protesting area, it equals out to a little over 16 percent of the land area, so it's less than one-fourth. But even if you conclude that the city staff's numbers are wrong and that we should have included right-of-way and we should have included the protests from the landowners, even if they were filed late and filed by the wrong party, it still equals out to about 24 and 1/2 percent of the total land area that is subject to annexation here. So whether our numbers are correct or the objecting landowners' numbers are correct, it's still the case that less than 25 percent or less than a fourth of the landowners subject to annexation have filed written protests. So for those reasons, the resolution is before you stating that the owners of less than one-fourth of the land area subject to annexation have filed written protests. If you do adopt this resolution, we will be filing the annexation resolution and the map of the annex area with county recorder, and the annexation will become effective immediately upon recording. I guess one final matter that I should address. At the last meeting, the objecting landowners had provided you with some information, including some case statute or case sites from the North Dakota Supreme Court, indicating that the land area ought to be calculated to the center line of the road. And I went through those cases and had a chance to read through the court's opinions on those. Those cases that were cited to you were all cases that dealt with county line section roads. They did not deal with platted land where there's a proprietor certificate that dedicates the land to the public. And those are very, very different situations. We do address county section lines differently than we address platted land. County section lines are identified in federal law as easements. And the farmer, whomever it is, that owns property in a rural agricultural district owns all the property up to the section line, and the public just has an easement right across that property. It's much different when you get into platted land, where that land is dedicated to the public and then owned by the jurisdiction that has governing authority over the platted land. If you have to take any questions, you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Any comments or questions by commissioners? Any comments or questions by commissioners? Would there be a motion regarding this resolution?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
I move to approve resolution number 26-2011.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Mr. Giann, it's not a public hearing, but we'll allow you to come up and make your comments.
Thank you, President Johnson. At the last meeting, I left here expecting to be contacted by the city. I got notice on Friday that you wanted to meet with me. I made every attempt to get back, not knowing who to call, but I guess I thought it was rather unusual that I would not be contacted until Friday. And I know today was a busy day, but I was very disappointed that we didn't meet sooner. You know, I'm hearing this for the first time, and I wanted the opportunity to sit down and go over with it. Mr. Coling, with all due respect, it's not about winning and losing. It's about getting it right. If there's 10 percent that protest, it needs to be calculated correctly. It does matter if you do it right or wrong, in my opinion. So, it isn't the fact that it's less than 25 percent we don't have to pay attention to the detail. When you referenced the statute, I guess my thought, and I don't know all the legalities, but prior to the proposal for annexation, the county took care of our roads. Would make sense to me then, just like you served the notice for annexation to the state, why wouldn't you have done that on the county for the right-of-way that they controlled? That, to me, would make the most sense. You don't just automatically take possession of that in your effort. It's a thought. I don't know if anyone's asked that question. You guys are faced with a challenge here as a commission as these annexations continue and they're important to the growth and development of Dickinson, but it's equally important that you get it right. It isn't about winning and losing. That's why I came here with a percentage of 24.7 percent. It's not about the winning. It's about doing it right. It's always been like that.
Mr. Giann, I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Coling on Wednesday, I believe it was, and I asked him at that time for an update. I asked him if he had an opportunity to speak with you. He reminded me that it was proper etiquette for him to approach your attorney first and ask permission to do that, which I believe you did, and maybe you can elaborate on that. I don't think he waited until the last minute to try to talk to you.
My information from Sandra was that she was contacted on Friday.
Well, Mr. Coling, can you address that?
Oh, we did contact Mr. Giann's attorney earlier in the week and requested the meeting. We traded correspondence and email back and forth, and we're ultimately not able to set anything up with Mr. Giann. I wish that we could have done so.
But you contacted the attorney for the plaintiff prior to Friday?
Yes.
And you can document that?
Yes.
Yeah, I apologize if I have bad information, but that's...
But I mean, he made, in my view, good faith...
I mean, I wasn't here, you know, I was here as a landowner. This is apart from my first effort. I was expecting a phone call from the city, and out of respect for the city, I didn't call them. I nearly did.
Yeah, when there's litigation involved, then, you know, again, he reminded me that the proper etiquette is for our attorney to contact your attorney, which he did. Secondly, can the deal about the county issue, the county roads, why wouldn't, if we're have to contact the state to have them sign off, why don't we contact the county?
It's different for the state. There's a specific statute that states no state-owned land may be annexed without the written consent of the state owning that land. So, that is the reason the state was notified and had to sign off on the annexation. The county was notified of the annexation, including the second annexation attempt, and they did not file a protest either.
Yeah, I think in regards to the legal interpretation, I think Mr. Coling has done his research. He's not only looked at statutes, he's looked at court cases that you cited. He also went the extra step to talk to some other city attorneys. Personally, I'm satisfied that his recommendation is a sound one.
My point is get it right, no matter the outcome of the percentages, because you want to have it right. And if it is, fine. The other point I have comes back to our neighbor to the south, and, you know, we respect the fact that the city has granted broad discretion in determining the boundaries and where you draw those lines, but there must be a legitimate public purpose behind what you do. We're baffled as to why in lane subdivision, you would exclude two lots and include everyone else, when basically those two lots are similarly situated to every other business within our subdivision. We share a commonwealth. We share everything else, and yet you go into this process and that individual is left out. Did we not ask the right questions? Did we not say we would prefer out at the right time? I think somebody should answer that question. Why was our neighbor to the south, those two lots, left out of this proposed annexation? And I thought, too, that was going to be addressed and didn't have that opportunity, so... And like I said before, I'm not here to dig an ax. You know, I serve on a school board. I know what you guys are up against when you have policies and procedures and changes, but it's important to get it right.
I don't think anybody disagrees with you on the importance of getting it right, and that's why we afforded you the courtesy of two more weeks.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I don't have an answer regarding the property that he's referring to if someone from our city staff, Mr. Kessel, Mr. Soren, or Mr. Coling, if you can answer the question. But, you know, as commissioners, we didn't draw the line, so...
President Johnson, you know, being involved with the annexation and going up and talking with the individuals the first time around, there was a lot of discussion about what was going on, and we tried to meet with a lot of people. When we got to Mr. Brown's property, he owns the subdivision directly behind his lots as well. It was our understanding at that time that he was possibly interested in his home and the other lot becoming into the city as well because of the water issue that was there. So, that's how the map originally got drawn with him out, because he was going to look at his house and possibly be bringing that in, and because it was the same property owner, that's why that happened. As we went through the process, the boundary ended up not getting changed, and the legal descriptions that were put in ended up leaving him out. Had we done it over, we'd have probably brought him in and just neglected his home and the other parcel that was part of the other subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Soren.
But my understanding then is why in the second annexation would you not have included him?
Mr. President, I can answer that.
Okay, Mr. Coling.
The secondary annexation process here is designed to be a repeat of what was done last fall in order to mitigate the consequences of the ongoing litigation. Had litigation not been filed by these landowners, we would not be going through this secondary annexation process. It's the litigation that precipitated this, and that's the reason why we chose to redo it with the exact same boundaries as was done last fall.
Then explain to me why Mr. Henry Brown is a plaintiff in the suit.
I do not represent Mr. Brown.
I know, but what I'm telling you is the man thought he was in. And there was confusion.
No, Mr. Giann, we can't be responsible for what he was...
No, what I'm saying, though, sir, is with all due respect, Mr. plaintiff, I mean, Mr. Brown is a plaintiff in the suit. He would have never, if he knew he was out, I doubt he would have done that.
Mr. Giann, you asked your question. They gave you an answer. I mean, if you want, if you'd like to debate their answer, I'd suggest...
I'm just making a point, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Mr. Coling.
If I may, whether the commission adopts this resolution tonight or not, we'd still be willing to get together with Mr. Giann and his counsel or whichever of the plaintiffs want to get together in order to further explain why it is that we calculated the land areas the way that we did. I would note the requirement for me to go through their attorney, it's not just a matter of etiquette, it's also a requirement of our professional rules of conduct. It would be an ethical violation for me to contact Mr. Giann directly. We do have to go through counsel once they select counsel or represented by an attorney.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Another discussion, the motion is to approve the resolution. It's been seconded. Are you prepared to vote then? Okay. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a full timetable agenda beginning at 5:00, and the first item there is the introduction and oath of office for a new police officer. And Captain Dossinger, would you make the introductions there and perform the ceremony?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. At this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our newest officer, Gordon Stevens, to the city and to the commission. Gordon started with our agency on March 1st.
Good, you're right, man. I'm Gordon Stevens. Deuce Almond Square.
Hi, Gordon Stevens. Deuce Almond Square.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Dakota.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Dakota.
And the Dickinson City Codes.
And the Dickinson City Codes.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position.
The duties of the position.
A police officer in the city of Dickinson.
A police officer in the city of Dickinson.
Star County, North Dakota.
Star County, North Dakota.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me out.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me.
Congratulations, you're welcome.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind.
Good afternoon. Already been introduced, Gordon Stevens. Absolutely. I want to thank everybody for welcoming me to your city, city of Dickinson. I feel like I've received nothing but open arms since I stepped into your city from the first day of testing here for the position at the police department. I appreciate that. A little bit about me, 31 years old, grew up in central Minnesota, and that's where I just came from. Just graduated from a law enforcement program in Alexandria, Minnesota, with the intention of becoming a full-time police officer. Got a family back in Minnesota that I hope to be joining me soon, wife and 12-year-old daughter and a less-than-one-year-old son. Raised by a large family, and this looks like a good city. I feel that it's a very welcoming community, and I hope to, you know, do the same, starting here. Again, I just want to say thanks for having me as one of your police officers.
Well, welcome, and we're always pleased when someone from Minnesota comes our way. It seems like we have too many North Dakotans who have gone that way, so it's good to get some back. When you said central Minnesota, which community?
I just recently moved from Melrose, Minnesota. I was raised in a very small town, Watkins, Minnesota. You know, I hear a lot of people say Dickinson is a real small town with a small-town mentality. The town that I grew up in, Watkins, was actually a population of 700, so I know about small-town, and this has got a few more opportunities than that, so...
Well, we're still a small town, but feels like we are getting a little bigger, so... But we're pleased you're here, and we look forward to many years of stewardship on your part, so thank you for being here. Any comments or questions here by commissioners?
Welcome aboard.
Commissioner Steiner said welcome aboard. He's soft-spoken, so...
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Look forward to providing many years of service.
Okay. All right. Well, the next item on the timetable agenda is a public hearing. This is regarding a utility easement vacation. Mr. Soren, is there anything you want to say about this?
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. This is a utility easement vacation request that we received from Denver-Kitsen. It is for the utility easement between lots 1 and 2 of Block 17 of Hart River Third Subdivision. The lots are located on 7th Street Southwest, across from the Hart River School. We have received all the signatures from utility companies signing off to the vacation, and therefore, we're recommending approval of the vacation request.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing. We'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone who wishes to comment regarding this matter may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? Okay, if there's no one from the public, we'll declare the public hearing closed. This is resolution number...
27-20.
27, okay. Is there any comments, questions by commissioners?
President, I'll move we approve resolution 27-2011.
I'll second it.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to the third timetable item. That's 515. That's also a public hearing. This is regarding establishing local truck routes. And there'll be two items here. One is a resolution, and the other could be first reading of an ordinance, so... Mr. Kessel, are you introducing this item?
I think Engineer Soren is introducing.
Engineer Soren, okay.
We do have in front of you tonight the proposed truck routes for the city of Dickinson. Just to run through the roads that we do have on here, is Highway 22 from the interstate north, Highway 22 from Broadway south. You'll notice we left the through-town part out of our truck route. We do have the Business Loop and Villard in there from the East Interchange to 6th Avenue Southwest, or Southeast, excuse me, and then from the West Interchange to State Avenue. We did leave that stretch of Villard off from our truck route as well. The other roads that we have included is Broadway from States to 6th Avenue Southeast, 6th Avenue Southeast to 8th Street Southeast, 8th Street Southeast and 8th Street Southwest, State Avenue from 8th Street Southwest all the way to 21st Street, 21st Street from State Avenue to 10th Avenue East, and then 10th Avenue East from the Business Loop and Villard to 21st Street. Those outside boundaries that I just went over, currently, we look at those as our truck route. We do have the south portion, meaning south of Villard, signed as our truck route currently. North, we don't have it signed. So, that, we're kind of keeping. Some of the big changes that we do have on here, though, is the elimination of Highway 22 from the interstate to Broadway and the stretch of Villard. When we looked at it, we felt that that was appropriate. We're giving trucks a good alternative to get it through town and keep them out of somewhat of our more congested areas. So, with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you might have with regards to that.
Question I...
Question I have kind of relates to trucks in the downtown area. The other day, I noticed, I think I counted 12, I believe they're oil trucks, waiting to unload at the downtown rail area. And these are big trucks. And, you know, these, the companies that are utilizing these trucks aren't located in the city of Dickinson. I mean, they're not paying property taxes here. But yet, these trucks are coming on our streets, even if they're dedicated as truck routes. And I've got to believe they're exacting a pretty heavy toll on this. Now, the railroad, of course, is a beneficiary here, and I don't know, are we able to assess property tax against the railroad's property in the community?
President Johnson, I believe railroads are centrally assessed, and so the state of North Dakota does that for us. It's an answer I can find out, I'm not 100% sure on that, but I don't believe we, as a city, can assess.
That, I mean, that's kind of what I was thinking, but I think we should verify that, because here, they're getting the benefit of all of our infrastructure, and here we've got an oil-unloading facility right in the heart of downtown. And to me, these things, these facilities should be well outside the community. And in any regard, if they're inside the community, we should have some way of generating revenue, rather than putting this on the backs of our residential property taxpayers, because we have to keep the roads in good shape. I think that's, this is unconscionable to have that many large oil trucks coming into downtown Dickinson. I could understand it when the Tesoro refinery was down for, you know, maintenance, but they're up and running, and I don't like what's happening here. So I'd like some clarification on whether or not the railroad is generating any revenue of property taxes for the city here. Because if that's not taking place, and these trucks aren't generating it, then I think we have to look elsewhere. And I know that's a little different from these truck route issue here, but it's kind of related. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open. If anybody else would like to speak regarding the proposed resolution and ordinance, you may do so. Come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Not, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Certainly invite comments and questions by commissioners here regarding this issue.
Sure, Mr. President. On 10th Avenue, 21st and State, those have been typically residential streets. Are they designed for truck route usage, or what kind of changes will we need to make to them, not only with traffic flow, but just the wear and tear?
All of the streets that we've listed are urban roads, and have been designed with the expectation for larger vehicles. We certainly did that intentional to try and encourage the trucks to stay in those areas as best we can. So they are built to a higher standard than a typical city street.
Okay. I will, you know, I guess my concern with the truck route on State is all the congestion that we have just with the school and the businesses there, and redirecting trucks on that route. Where do you see this going long-term, I guess? What are the steps that we're taking to make this smoother?
Not sure if I'm following your question, but, you know, I think there's a lot of discussion right now with DOT, trying to figure out how we can remove the trucks from town. Is there an alternative route that maybe can be farther out? We're, actually, at the end of the month, we've got a meeting with them to talk about those exact things. Currently, though, what we're trying to do is establish something in town when we know vehicles have to get through, and try and find them an alternative to go through. So we're giving them more than one, and trying to keep them off of our residential streets, which are certainly not designed to handle that type of traffic. But yes, we have to continue to look at ways to handle the truck traffic. You know, as we get development that builds up around these roads, it does make it more and more difficult all the time. State Avenue, you know, 10 years ago was not the same road as it is today, even when I came back, just because of the development that's happened, new community center, the houses, and so we've got to look at how we can handle those increased loads and move that traffic safely and get them through our community.
I suppose an alternative there would have been to eliminate State's Avenue, push them down the interstate over to Exit 59, and come in on Villard and catch up with the State's Avenue south of Villard. That would work also. It would push the trucks, you know, further out of their direct route, but.
Right, and then there's also a north link where they could end up north of town as well, if they went that way, once they take Exit 59 and go over the bridge.
To go north.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's really one of the alternatives there that Mr. Kessel and Mr. Soren are talking to both the county and the state about. I know also, one of the reasons we have the heavier trucks here on this end of town has to do with the sale of water, you know, our, what do we call that when we sell water vendor, yeah? And longer, these two gentlemen are having discussions with Southwest Water about some sort of joint cooperation between city and Southwest Water in terms of setting up a common water vendor way out on the east side of town. Now, that's longer term, but if we could get that to take place, we could remove some of the truck traffic that's in that State's Avenue area right now.
So how difficult would it be to not declare State's as a truck route and move it further east of town?
It'd be simple to not declare it. I mean, we can just pull it out of the resolution. The concern is, we certainly can't designate a county road as a truck route.
Right.
And so one of the problems is if we brought them up to the interstate, and then back on the interstate to Highway 22, is that left-hand turn to go north on 22 is a concern right now as well for northbound truck traffic. That would create some concerns. Could it be done? Certainly, we could look at changing that if that was the wishes.
It's going to be a concern anyways, because the truck route, State then leads into 21st, and you're going to have that left-hand turn with this truck route as well.
Signalized intersection.
Right.
Right.
Have you been at that one?
Yeah, it's.
That's hard.
And we're working on those improvements as well.
Mr. Steiner?
I also have the same concern as Commissioner Altman. You know, a lot of people express their views of truck traffic through the community and so on. And it's the State Avenue street that they specifically mention. I mean, no one's ever come to me and said 10th Avenue is bad, and so on, even though we know it is. But I've had a lot of people in the state addition, with not only this school there, but the community center, the college, and so on, they're very concerned with directing these trucks through that State Avenue. So I have the same concerns as Commissioner Altman, and I'd like to take another look at that also.
I think you look at that with the school, you look at this fall with schools starting up, and then football games at the activity center, and then add that as our truck route, it's a nightmare.
Mr. Steiner?
The other concern on State Avenue is the stop signs, just, I don't know what, State Avenue, what, 9th maybe, or Fairway? Well, one south of the rec center. That's a tough stop sign for new people in town. There's a lot of people drive by that one, even with the blinking light and so on. Directing more traffic down there, I mean, the police chief can verify, but there's a lot of accidents on that State Avenue, and probably at that intersection. I've known of a few myself, in the business I am, of the accidents that happen there. And I just think forcing a lot of traffic through there is not going to make it better.
Well, that's why we had to pass the ordinance, that you couldn't cut through the lot to avert the stop sign. You know, that intersection was part of the reason that we had, that the police department brought that ordinance to us. I just think that adding State as a truck route, it's not in the best interest. So what would the solution be?
I'd have to go back and look, you know, I mean, ultimately, it'd probably push them over to 10th Avenue East, down to Villard, onto Villard to 6th Avenue, Broadway, to 22.
And you wouldn't have one around the west side.
Yeah, it would just be around the east side, potentially. Because I don't think we want to try and encourage them to go straight down 22. We do have an underpass issue, and there's congestion issues there as well, so.
So how does it work when you have your truck route? For instance, we have our truck route that ends at Exit 59, and that's where our city limits ends. We direct there, and then we run out of real estate. How does that work? We get them to that point, there is a path that they can follow from there to get where we want them to go, but we can't designate it as a truck route. Where do we end as far as our input, and how do you do that?
Well, our enforcement of the truck route's only within the city limits, so it would end at that point. If the county put load restrictions or something on after that, or they did something to eliminate the truck traffic from going that direction, that would be up to them.
Right.
That's why we ended at the interstate, because that's what's within our jurisdiction and what our police department can enforce, the truck traffic through town.
So if we take State out of the equation, and we leave that elbow that runs up to Exit 59, that's where we're encouraging trucks to head, and then we have no control over what happens from there? But are we okay to designate it that way?
Well, I think we can get them to the interstate, certainly. From that point on, you know, the four miles in the county, that could be creating them some heartaches, and they may have to put some load restrictions if it was a problem for them. But it would be up to them to make that determination.
Mr. President? Go ahead. Mr. Altman, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the county is discussing truck route at this time. They asked us, or we coordinated with them?
Well, as President Johnson indicated, the DOT is coming out, and we are looking at trying to do some things to maybe accomplish what we're looking at, trying to get them past that, and working in conjunction with the county.
I'd rather see us take our time with this here, whether it's another two weeks or another month, to get their ideas and so on, and.
I would agree, and I think it helps us force the issue away from State by not incorporating it into our truck route. I think if we incorporate it into the truck route, and then ask to revamp it, that's a much harder way to go than if you take it off the table and force the issue, and help reestablish where the truck route should be. I think it'd be harder to correct it if we moved forward with it right now.
I would agree.
Mr. Jackson or Mr. Frenzel, would you like to weigh in on this discussion?
I tend to agree with what's been said, that it would be a good idea to take State Avenue out of the equation, and spend some time with the county, to see if we can't designate that county road that goes north from the interstate, up and then comes out, if it actually comes out 2's, is there, is the county's truck route.
I think they're talking about that, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, I share all the concerns too. It's good conversation about State's Avenue. I have a little bit different question, though, for Mr. Soren, maybe for us, but for the public who might be listening to this conversation. From a practical, day-to-day standpoint, what does this really mean? What about things like deliveries that have to get through? What about, you know, I saw a semi the other day parked in a very residential area. As I recall, it was just off Fairway, 10th Avenue or something like that. You know, what about those issues? How does that relate to all this?
Captain Dossinger is going to help with that one.
Yes. You know, this isn't a magic fix, it would be just a tool for us to use, but the companies such as Dickinson Ready Mix or the delivery points, we would ask them to follow the truck route until they take the most direct route from the truck route to their delivery point, and then back out to the truck route. That's why we kind of like to include the State Avenue to this. We certainly have the same concerns as far as the schools, you know, the Vazanz Activity Center, the community center with this, that we really felt that there needed to be a north and south, a travel route for a lot of these companies within our city limits on the outskirts with that. And I feel if we didn't include that, we'd probably have to include Villard, and I would sooner have the traffic on State's than down the heart of our city on Villard.
Captain Dossinger, what about that independent trucker who wants to park his semi in front of his house at night?
That's not allowed. You're not supposed to park your commercial semi or a semi in a residential area.
How about if you take State Street out of the equation, and you do the exit, and you come back in on, is it Fairway that lines back up with State? Again, a four-way stop there at State and Fairway just north of the rec center? Is that Fairway?
State's and Empire, is that what you're saying?
Is that State's and Empire? And then turns into Fairway and heads backwards to the interstate?
You know, there's also a lot of traffic at both, you know, State's and Fairway and State's and Empire. There's a lot of traffic at both those intersections right now.
So if you redirected it up to Empire, though, there is a road that connects to the interstate there?
I'm not sure if that road is actually constructed for the truck traffic.
It's a bad road, yeah, it's a bad.
I don't believe it is. That road wouldn't handle the truck traffic.
Right.
But like I says, this isn't a magic fix all to our traffic flow problems, especially with the commercial trucks, but it would be a tool for our agency to utilize. And I did, within the last two weeks, I have met with a lot of the local contractors concerning the truck route. I met with Dickinson Ready Mix several times, B&amp;J Excavation, 2's Construction, and several others, looking for soliciting some feedback from this, and, you know, I got a lot of positive comments with us trying to do something, didn't get a lot of negative feedback. They were concerned as far as when they did have delivery points, specifically Dickinson Ready Mix, how would they go about their business? And I explained to them, as long as they follow our designated truck routes, and take the most direct point off of that to their delivery point, and back on again, they would be certainly within our city ordinance. You know, right now on State's Avenue, we do have truck traffic, you know, we have the tank battery on State's Avenue where they're coming to take the crude oil out on State's and 1500 Block, you know, we would still have that traffic, because they have to get to that site. Hopefully with this, they can come in off of Interstate, come down 21st Street, load up, and go back on the 21st Street and back on the interstate, and they would stay off of heading south on State's out to Highway 10.
Well, there are no easy answers. It's possible, after you spend some time discussing this and thinking it through, that this very well could be the best alternative, the best of four choices.
this very well could be the best alternative, the best of four choices, but still the best.
I would just really like to see State's taken out of the equation, and I think it gives us a stronger position to bargain from and to come to terms with as we move forward with the DOT if we haven't already established State's as part of the truck route.
And I think we certainly can relook at it, maybe meet with the county to see what their plans are, and we can certainly take another look at it.
Sure.
We, this meeting with State DOT is the end of this month?
I believe it's the 31st.
That'd be the end of the month.
That'd be the end.
We agree on that.
I hope it is.
Would you like to push this off till after that meeting and see what comes of that? Does that make a difference?
Well, I guess we want to make sure that we do this the right way. We're in no hurry to do something, and then we're going to regret it down the road. So I would just take the time and wait and do it the right way the first time.
Okay. What about the ordinance here? Is that, that's not really addressing anything with the truck route itself, is it?
The only thing that that's addressing is the violation of the truck route. If they would be, to be a truck on the truck, not on the truck route when it should be, we'd assess a $100 fine to the driver, the owner of the truck. That was the addition.
So we can act on this?
That's correct.
But delay acting on the resolution for a while? Okay. Is that kind of a consensus here that we should do that?
Definitely. And the $100 fine mirrors the North Dakota Century Code, and it's actually mirrored Dr. Westfargo's fine system as well.
All right. Thank you, Captain. Well, then, we'll delay the resolution, acting on the resolution. The ordinance is ordinance number what?
It's ordinance number 1414, 1414.
14 what?
1414.
1414. Oh, okay. Been easier if you'd have just made it 28. Okay. Well, if there's anyone that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance, you may do so. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public that wishes to comment? Mr. Coley, is there anything you would like to say about it? There's not too many changes here.
No, Mr. President, there are not. I think Captain Dossinger covered the substance of the ordinance and could recommend approval.
Any comments by commissioners?
I have one question. Does anybody know how much water does one of these tankers carry?
You mean weight or gallons?
Gallons. Does anybody know that? We're selling water for how much?
$1,650 a thousand. And that's the high point.
I wonder how many cents per thousand that $100 fine will add?
Not many.
I don't think so either.
But it was the maximum that we could go with, according to state law and?
That's correct. Mr. Altman, the fine amount mirrors the requirement that's put in by state law.
Okay.
Will there be a motion regarding first reading of this ordinance?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Move to approve first reading of ordinance number 1414.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to our 525 item, and this is a public hearing on a rezoning petition in the State's 6th Edition. And Mr. Soren, can you introduce us further?
Mr. President, Commissioners.
Oh, okay.
Ed Corton, City Planner. The rezon petition in front of you tonight is an extension or a continuation of the State's Edition Master Plan. If you recall, over the last year, you've had two, you've had two replats and rezones, State's 4th Edition and State's 5th Edition, and this is a continuation as part of their master plan. The subject property is located easterly of the Business Loop and southerly of the 7th Street Edition. The rezone is from R1 to R3 for Blocks 1, Lot 1. Rezone from R1 to R2 on Blocks 2, which consists of 10 lots, Lots 1 through 10, and the remainder of the 6th Edition is going to be R1. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval, as well as the staff, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Corton? Excellent presentation.
It was brief, right?
Brief, but excellent, yes.
I would think with the time, you would want that.
That's true. Okay. Well, this too is a first reading of an ordinance, I assume 1415? Okay. Would there be a motion regarding this proposed ordinance?
Public hearing.
Didn't I already ask if there was someone that wanted to comment? Oh. Okay, is there, excuse me, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this ordinance? Anybody at all? Okay, there's no comments from the public. Now the chair to entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval of the first reading of ordinance 1415.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Now, any discussion? No discussion? We'll proceed to vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to the 535 public hearing. This is another rezoning petition, and Mr. Corton, would you introduce this item?
Sure. Mr. President, Commissioners, the next item is Sullivan Construction. They are proposing a rezone from R2 to R3. The property is generally located north of 21st Street West and west of 10th Avenue West. More specifically, it is located to the north of the Century Apartments. When you look at, when you look at the zoning map, Century Apartments is an R1 zone, but it's more representative of an R3 that we have. And to the west of 10th Avenue, over the last year, if you recall, we've had two rezones from R2 to R3. Reviewing the petition against the existing land uses, staff feels it's very compatible to have an R3 zone in that particular area. Staff recommends approval. Last month, it went in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as well. I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Was there anyone in opposition at the planning and zoning meeting to this rezoning?
We had no comments to it.
If there's anybody from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance, you may do so. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? No one from the public, so the chair to entertain a motion from the city commissioners?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Move to approve first reading of ordinance number 1416.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have the motion, the second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Frenzel.
I will be abstaining from voting on this issue as my, as the, my office is directly involved in the transaction.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and Mr. Frenzel abstains, the motion carries. Thank you. We'll go down to item 4F, and this is reports. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Johnson and Mr. Corton. Just so you know, the honeymoon period ends rather quickly around here for additional funding. Happy to say that someone did turn back funds, and so we now are in line for $35,000 instead of the $2,000 we originally were slated for. So the modeling that is discussed specifically is water and wastewater modeling. I hope to bring a presentation to Stark Development to partner with this project in, along with the City of Dickinson. So that was very good news. The other item that I'd like to just mention is Daniel Ingram, who is our new museum coordinator. Starts on Monday. We'll formally bring him to the city commission and introduce you, but I just wanted you to make you aware, since it's an off week, that Mr. Ingram will start on May 9th. The remaining items are simply thank yous and self-explanatory. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any comments or questions for the city administrator? All right. Well, we'll move to tab 5, Public Safety, and we'll hear from Chief Seavock.
President Johnson, Commissioners, I want to present some information that we've been gathering in the discussion of the need for a fire department substation for the City of Dickinson and the best location for such a station. A couple of things drive that. One, of course, is the recognition of the growing community. One of the first things we look at is travel distance, which we've reported to you in other meetings. The orange shaded area, the inner circle, if you will, represents the recommended travel distance of 1.5 miles from our central fire station located on 2nd Avenue West, and it shows the area of town that already lies beyond that. The other shaded area, the secondary circle, the larger area, shows recommended travel distance of 2.5 miles for an aerial ladder truck, which shows that the City of Dickinson, with the exception of the extreme east and extreme north, is still fairly well-covered by the central location of that ladder truck. Also to take into consideration, besides travel distance, however, is time. Time dictated by travel dense, by traffic density, by population density. And one of the things that we want to look at in choosing the proper location for a substation is our target hazard of population, life safety. And in looking at how the city is growing, although it is growing pretty much in all directions, the most density of a nighttime population is the northwest part of town. If you look at the motels, the hotels, the multifamily housing, and the single-family housing, it's all trending towards the west and towards the northwest. So what we did initially at this preliminary stage of the game is we randomly chose some locations just to see what kind of coverage we'd be looking at, to see if our instinct of northwest is enough or is adequate. This is a 21st Street and 10th Avenue East location, again randomly chosen just to show what kind of coverage we would gain by that. Fairway and I-94 Business Loop, another random choice, just to show, again, area of coverage by that new station and what would it do. In both of these scenarios, we aren't really covering the north and the west population that we hope to capture. 15th Street and State Avenue, and there's another one I'll show in just a second, well, I'll show it right now, actually, 21st Street and State Avenue. Although they may be viable locations from one point of view, they don't take into consideration the future growth of the city and the planning aspect, and I haven't had a chance to visit with our city planner. And here again, we can show these just for representation of travel area, but they wouldn't be the most ideal location for a fire department substation from a planning point of view because they take valuable real estate off the picture. The fire department substation would not be a tax-paying entity. Properties along that State Avenue corridor would be more valuable, served somehow else, probably. This represents 21st Street. It's a parcel of property owned by the Dickinson Park and Rec. In conversations with James Kramer, we know that Dickinson Park and Rec at this point in time does not plan on developing that for a park. There may be some possibilities, some opportunities to look at partnering with them or acquiring that piece of property for a fire department substation, but that's, there are some hoops that would have to be jumped through. There are some things that would have to be looked at. And again, this is very preliminary. All we wanted to do at this stage of the game is put some of our thought processes in front of you, show you what we're looking at, and show you that so far, the data that we're compiling and the data that we're going over seems to show us that north and west is going to be probably the best area. And it's very preliminary at this point in time, and we'll be bringing more information back to you at a later date.
I have a question, Chief. When we have, say we have a fire substation, what do you envision equipping that with? And would that be equipment beyond what we now have? I mean, are we, are we looking at not only a new building, but some additional equipment?
At this point in time, I would say we're not looking at additional equipment, although some of the equipment that we would be placing in that substation four years from now will be slated, hopefully, for replacement.
Okay, but, yeah, I understand we have some that certainly is aging, but you don't envision new equipment or additional equipment above what is scheduled for replacement?
At this point in time, Mr. Mayor, no, we don't. One of the things that's going to help us to determine that is a reevaluation by ISO Services, which is going to be done in the end of May. And they're going to be evaluating the fire department's capabilities, our equipment, as well as city infrastructure, as how the city is growing. Through the information we gain from that, we may learn that an additional ladder company, for instance, may be something that would be very beneficial for the community to look at, and cost savings would be there in insurance premiums and so on. I don't, at this point in time, foresee that, though. I foresee staffing the new station with the equipment that we already have.
Okay. Another question, then, is if we have a fire substation, does that require, you know, people to be sleeping there on, you know, in the evenings like we now have in the downtown station?
To make it as usable and as viable for the community as it could be, it is our hope and it is our intent that we would have a night duty program at that station like we run with the central fire station. And that gets into some information that we hope will be gathered by the needs assessment we're doing in dealing with personnel issues, not just career positions that we may have to come and ask for, but also the volunteer aspect of it. Because the volunteer aspect is truly what keeps something like that night duty program going. But yes, sir, that's exactly right. To recognize the need for a station is one thing, and to present that need to you and to have the Board of Commissioners say, yes, we recognize this, we'll build a building. That's all well and good. How do we make that building functional? And that's people. So that's the other aspect that we have to look at and integrate into this.
Chief, I have a question. It seems as you're moving the dots around the map that the substation that the city used to have, that's the rural station now, would obviously be a good place, and that the dot would line up to cover some of the areas. Is there any chance of partnering, or is there any land available in conjunction with that, or any partnership that you can do? Have you looked into that?
We have a truck at that station right now. We have had for a long time. The problem is the frontage road that is now in front of that station. When that station was first built, that wasn't the case. When Highway 22 was redone and the grade changed, then that frontage road ended up in front of that station. Access for the trucks from that station is not very desirable. As a matter of fact, the Dickinson Rural Fire Department is trying to decide whether that's the best location for them, or whether they should market the property and look at something else also. Strictly from a geographic point of view on the map, you're right, Commissioner, that it was fairly well-located. There are some issues with it today, however, in the trucks coming out of that station and in their access to the main arteries.
Mm-hmm. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Police Department.
On March 31st, alcohol compliance checks were completed on all of our off-sale liquor locations in Dickinson. I'm happy to report that all nine locations passed the compliance checks. The compliance checks were conducted by detectives along with DSU students in cooperation with the Save Communities Program. We will be conducting compliance checks on all of our on-sale locations in the near future.
Okay. Any comments or questions for the captain regarding this? Well, that was very good that they all passed. That hasn't always been the case.
Hasn't been in the past, but very good this time.
So we'd certainly take our hats off to him this time.
Thank you.
We'll move to tab six, Public Works. Mr. Sorn. Are you getting help from City Planner on this one?
We'll take this one. This is the final plat of the State Sixth. The map was in front of you in front of the, with the rezoning of this subdivision. As was stated earlier, this is the ROARs development that's continuing the master plan of the State Edition area between the Business Loop and 23rd Avenue, south of Fairway. We are recommending approval of this, as Planning and Zoning has reviewed this at the last meeting and is recommending approval as well.
And it's resolution number?
Resolution 29-2011.
Twenty-nine, okay. You've heard Mr. Sorn's presentation. Any comments or questions for him?
Mr. President, is this a, did we already approve an impact fee request for this particular plat?
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
I will move that we approve resolution 28.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, sorry. Twenty-nine, 2011.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll let you continue with item B.
This is a cost participation, construction and maintenance agreement with the North Dakota Department of Transportation. This is for the Urban Roads Project that we have slated for this summer, which is 18th Avenue East from the I-94 Business Loop to 9th Street East. This is the standard agreement that the DOT requires us to go through, which does allow us to get just about eighty-one percent of the funds for this project through federal, and then we have the matching funds. It does have a maximum amount of 616,000 on this project, and the project is scheduled to go for June 17th bidletting this year. With that, I am recommending approval of this agreement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sorn. You've heard his introduction and comments or questions? Now, is there a motion regarding this agreement?
I'd make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Let's continue with item C.
This is for the master plan of our solid waste facility. We did have RFQs go out requesting firms to submit proposals to conduct the master plan of the landfill, as well as assist us in renewing our permit. We did have two firms that submitted proposals, Winkin Associates and McCain and Associates. The subcommittee met and reviewed them, and upon completion of our review, the recommendation was to go with Wink. And with that, they have submitted the contract for that work, and we are requesting the City Commission to approve Winkin Associates to conduct the master plan of our landfill.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sorn. You heard the introduction. Comments, questions? I noticed in the agreement, City of Dickinson is located in Rapid City, and the agreement would be subject to South Dakota laws. I suspect they didn't mean to do that, but...
Can we bail through Rapid City, then?
I would think we could. I assume they took a standard agreement that they've done this before, but if you look on page one, our address is 306th Street, Rapid City, South Dakota, and then on page two, under Personnel, they refer to South Dakota. And I didn't read through it that much more closely to see if there were anything else like that. Mr. Colley, and what do we do with this?
Mr. President, if you want to approve the agreement with the necessary changes, we can make changes and submit it back to them for signing.
I'll make that motion.
We have that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And, Mr. Colley, and you'll review it closely to determine all those necessary changes?
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
I think you can take a good look at page five also. They refer to the City of Rapid City as additional insurance and so on, so that's another area that...
Oh, yeah, I see it there.
Needs to be consulted.
Okay. Any others? So we would be approving this with the necessary changes. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay. I know Mr. Steiner has some comments that he'd like to make under the City Commissioner comments. Mr. Steiner, we'll start with you, and then see if anybody else has some.
Just a couple topics here that some people brought up to me, some concerns, and I think we just need to check into it and see what the issues are. But one of them would be the storage containers that we're starting to see on some of the commercial sites, some on the personal sites. You're seeing some advertising now for personal storage units and so on. I know that, I believe that Bismarck has an ordinance on that, and maybe that's something we can check into. The concern there is that some of the commercial facilities might be adding storage facilities there instead of adding on to their buildings, thus bypassing taxes that are due to the city. You know, they put in, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty storage containers instead of billing on. That was a concern of one of the individuals there. The other one is that I think we need to be concerned about the amount of people coming into town and using a storage facility as living quarters. I know there were a couple last summer that actually cheaper to rent a storage facility, act their travel trailer into it or whatever, and living out of there. The third one is another thing we should, I know there was concern this winter, I believe, from an individual, about the number of people living in one home not being relatives or so on. Was that two or four? That was four. Okay. I think it needs to be put out there for the people because in this case, it was like livestock trailers, recreational vehicle, boat, there were thirteen of them at this one location that he counted one day. You know, so that'll be coming up. The other thing I think that probably needs to come up again for the community is if we can bring up the neighborhood watch programs again. At least let the neighbors know that they want to establish one, that we can help them out. Chief Rommel, does that come from your department?
Yes.
Okay. That's basically short, quick.
Thank you. Commissioner Steiner, comments from other commissioners? There's no other comments. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address the commission? If so, just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public, so the chair to entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Is there a second?
Second.